Board meeting of Spotsylvania County to order on Monday, October 12th. We have a quorum. Ms. Grant, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. I'd just like to ask everyone, please, to silence your cellphones. And Deputy Barton from the Spotsylvania Sheriff's Department is here. Thank you for being here. And before we approve the agenda, I would like to have a, say a couple of things here. It is with much sadness that I share news of two recent pass, two recent passings. One of a staff member and one of a student. On Sunday, October 4th, Mrs. Juanidi Lamoy passed away. Mrs. Lamoy worked for Spotsylvania County Schools for 25 years at Chancellor High and Chancellor Middle, most recently as their cafeteria manager. And on Tuesday, October 6th, Spotsylvania High student Nicole Guequero passed away. Nicole was a 12-plus ID student who spent most of her time in the special education area. However, she enjoyed music class and helping out with tasks throughout the building. Nicole will always be remembered by her wonderful smile and engaging personality. Please join me in a moment of silence as we celebrate these special ladies. They touch the lives of many and will be missed tremendously. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Mrs. Blaylock.
Second.
Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Moving on to item 2.0, 2.01, we have no public hearings, so moving on to instructional highlights. 3.01, Chancellor High School Voice Ensemble. Ms. Flannard.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Chancellor High School's vocal ensemble, under the direction of Rhonda Miller, is the school's top auditioned choir. Last year, this group received superior ratings from all the judges at the district assessment, while also singing Level Six literature, which is the highest level of difficulty. Last year, Chancellor's choirs also placed 29 students in district chorus, six students in all-state chorus, one student in senior honor choir, and two students in national honor choir. This evening, vocal ensemble will be singing "Esto les digo" by Kinley Lang and "Your Smiling Face" by James Taylor.
Thank you so much. And not to mention, I really like James Taylor, so that was even a plus. That was great. Thank you so much for being here and sharing your beautiful voices with us. Okay, moving on to item 4.01, fine arts recognition. Ms. Flannard.
Thank you again. This evening, we are celebrating the outstanding artwork of 100 students from six of our schools. This month, we are showing artwork from Brock Road Elementary, art teacher Rebecca Baring, Chancellor Elementary, art teacher Caitlin LaFaro, Salem Elementary, art teacher Jeannie Carr, Chancellor Elementary, art teacher Shannon McKay, and Chancellor High School, art teacher Leanne Houston. If there are any students that are still present that have artwork in the building, if they could please stand? I think so. And if there's any art teachers that are still here with us, if they could please stand? We did celebrate them earlier this evening before the board meeting began, as you are well aware.
Thank you. And then, moving on to item 4.02, Superintendent's Award. Ms. Flannard.
Thank you. This summer, the Superintendent's Award for Outstanding Visual Arts goes to Amy Powell. Ms. Powell is currently an 11th grader at Massaponics High School. She completed the art last year in Ms. Atkinson's class. The original piece of the art hung in Dr. Baker's office this summer. We would like Ms. Powell and her art teacher to come forward and be recognized for her outstanding accomplishment. And if we could take a moment to acknowledge Amy's family that is present with her, if they could please stand? Emily's family?
Congratulations again to all of our art winners. Wonderful. And all of the people that have their artwork in the building. It's nice to brighten up the rooms and just to show the talent that we have here in Spotsylvania County. So, thank you. Moving on to item 5.01, public comments. Dr. Martin, would you please give the instructions?
Good evening. The public comments segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes, and we ask that they clearly state the name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a love of decorum and mutual respect for one another. Madam Chair, we do not have any speakers signed up at the present time, so I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Is there anyone in the audience that cares to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close public comments and move on to 5.02, board member comments. Mr. Laura, I'm going to start on your side today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I'll have three comments that I'd like to make. First of all, on a lighter note, Chancellor is playing at Cortland right, well, they're going to start in about 10 minutes. I hope we can get out of here so that I can see the last quarter of the game. Be brief. We have, we have with us some very important people that I'd like to ask all our school employees who work today and are going to go to work tomorrow morning to please stand to be recognized, especially the principals, but all of you who work for the Spotsylvania School Division, please stand, including the folks in the front. There you go. Thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you do every day. And lastly, Madam Chair, in a few weeks, we're going to be celebrating Veterans Day. Mrs. Blaylock and I were just chatting a minute ago about the importance of Veterans Day. In recent months, I've had the pleasure and the honor of visiting both the United States Naval Academy in Annapolis and the United States Military Academy at West Point. And to see the Corps of Cadet at both of those universities marching, that to me is the sound of freedom. Being a veteran is not about tutsi roll and watching television and sleeping late. It's about honor, duty, and country. And it's about sacrifice. And not only are the veterans themselves sacrificing, but so are their families. So, I think the best way that we, as a school, can honor the veterans is by coming to work that day and talking about what it is to be an American. Because I know that without the United States armed forces, there'd be no United States of America. So, we owe these veterans so much. And on Veterans Day, we pay tribute to them by remembering them and their contribution to our country. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Laura. Dr. Meyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to recognize and say special thanks to the Chancellor Voice Ensemble for sharing their talent with us and for the students for sharing their artwork. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Ms. Blaylock.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I would like to also piggyback on Dr. Meyer. I really enjoyed the music this evening. Congratulations to the art winners. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a couple announcements. First is, on November 11th, we are going to recognize the Friendly School Challenge winners from the race that we had on the 26th of, I mean, of September at Cortland High School. The race was very successful. We had over 1,000 runners. We're very delighted that not only we had a great turnout on a day that seemed kind of dreary, but we also had a great turnout to hear a positive message about the importance of teen violence. The winners in the high school division, some have already been announced. The Massaponics ended up taking first place in the high school division, beating out Cortland by six. And in the middle school division, Freedom ended up coming in first place, beating out Spotsylvania by four entrance. So, it was a really close battle all the way around, but we want to recognize these schools for their involvement. So, first place will receive a $1,000 check. To our principals, do whatever they need to do in their schools. Second place, $500. And third place will get a $250 check. And other than that, I have nothing else.
Thank you. Mr. Blaine.
Recently, I've had an opportunity to interact with a number of people in the Chancellor High School area. And I'd just like to commend and pass along, let me say, some of the comments that I've heard. And one of the things that I heard so much about from many parents was the quality of the music program. And I think we've had a good illustration of that this evening. I met several folks who have had children there and gone on to higher education, and I have just run into so many parents who are absolutely proud to be able to say their youngster's got a PhD in this or a master's in that. And I would like to commend the staff from that school, especially this evening because of that recent experience.
Thank you, Ms. Grant.
I just want to say, go Cortland.
And once again, thank you to all of the artists and the musicians. And I just want to say that I've gotten an update. Riverbend is playing a field hockey game this evening against Garfield, which is a division school. And right now, it's still the first half, and Riverbend is up nine to zero. So, I'm going to close board member comments, and I'm going to move to Dr. Baker and Superintendent. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I think in the spirit of brevity that's been modeled thus far, I'm going to also keep it brief and echo the comments regarding our, really, our first meeting of the year to include all of the new student artwork, as well as a performance by the Chancellor High School Ensemble. And again, it reinforces for us the talent that we have in our school division, but the talent that's being cultivated by our teachers and our staff, as well as being supported by our parents and our community. So, I'd like to thank them for that, and I'll withhold any other comments until appropriate in the other part of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Moving on to 6.01, board committee reports. Was there any reports to be made this evening? Okay.
The Spotsylvania Education Foundation, we did meet. Nothing to really share, but I want to share with my board members, we had a successful meeting. Looking forward to new things in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Mr. Braswell.
I just want to report that the Head Start had their annual social for, ice cream social, introducing new students to Head Start. It was at Battlefield Elementary, well-attended, and we're really excited to see the new students that we're going to partake in Head Start, but the new employees that we have that are going to engage our students and enrich their lives. So, with that being said, that's all.
Thank you. And then, I'm just going to report that the Food Task Force will be meeting next week for our first meeting of the year, school year. So, moving on now to the consent agenda. Dr. Martin, could you let us know?
On the consent agenda, of the minutes of the September 28th regular meeting of the school board and donations, which are usual and customary, staff asks that these items be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I will so move.
Mr. Blaine in a second, by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to action, item 8.01, approval of non-exclusive easement to Verizon. Mr. Upperco.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Spotsylvania County has entered into a license agreement with Verizon Wireless to lease a portion of the Ashby Water Tank site, which is owned by the county, for the purpose of installing telecommunications equipment. Verizon Wireless is seeking from the school division ingress and egress to the water tank site via a non-exclusive perpetual easement and right-of-way. The water tank site is located behind Wilderness Elementary School and Ny River Middle School. The easement has been vetted by the school board attorney. The administration's recommendation is that the school board approve the non-exclusive perpetual easement and right-of-way to Verizon Wireless in support of the Spotsylvania County License Agreement. Any questions?
May I have a motion to approve the non-inclusive, non-exclusive easement? Please.
So, move, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer, may I have a second? I'll second. Second by Mrs. Blaylock. Do we have any discussion, any questions for Mr. Upperco? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the easement to Verizon, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Upperco. Okay, and now, we're moving on to the approval of the 2015 carryover usage, uses. Ms. Gaines and Ms. Blaylock.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Thank you for an opportunity to present this evening. You should have in front of you a green folder, and I want to draw your attention to a couple items. If you look to the left of your folder, you will see the cover sheet for this particular item. When you look at carryover, it's basically monies that are left over from the previous year. So, if you look at the handout behind the cover sheet, you'll basically see six columns. I want to draw your attention to column four. You'll basically see the carryover, $2,517,850. This is the amount that was unexpended as of June 30 of 2015. You can see from instruction, 866, admin $55,000, attendance $155,000, transportation $291,000, maintenance $500,000, technology $137,000, and debt service $77,000. When you put that in perspective, in terms of looking at the entire budget, instruction only had .48% unexpended. Administration, 1.27%. Attendance, 3%. Transportation, 1.7%. Maintenance, 2.4%. Technology, 1.88%. And debt service, .12%. So, in total, the 2.5 million carryover, the amount unexpended is .8%, less than 1%. So, therefore, staff did expend 99.2% wisely and prudently. That does go to the request for this evening. When you look at the 2.5 million, there are many priorities that we have. But the top priority is online curriculum resources and instructional materials, 2.4 million. Instructional technology, 100,000. If you look to the right of your folder, we are providing you with the write-up. When you look at technology, how would the 100,000 be spent? Combination of items. Keep in mind, when we were going through the budget about a year ago, we did have to reduce $910,000. We were hopeful that we would have some carryover, and we do today. So, 100,000 would go back to technology. This was the amount that they did give up. It would be used for repair and replacement parts, projector bulbs, for existing projectors, and US batteries. The remaining portion of the carryover would be for online curriculum resources and instructional materials. Before Jen goes through her presentation, I did put in your folder just some trend data. You can see prior to 2015, the school board had very little in the budget for these items. And that was because the goal was to save positions. So, at this time, we'll review for you the 2.4.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. At this point in time, I'd really like to entertain any questions that you have. We have a multitude of resources that really, over the past 10 years, we've kind of put that on the back burner. As the downturn in the economy happened, we saved positions, we saved as many human resources as we possibly could, because that's what impacts our kids the most. But many of our resources are now 10, 11, 12 years old, and they are either in disrepair or very outdated. As you can imagine, science is at the top of the list, simply because of the advancements in science. As you'll see, we are looking at three AP texts at the top of the list, and those really are to meet college board requirements. They have a requirement that their text and resources be no older than 10 years. So, we are coming to the 10-year mark in those three courses. Next, we have middle school science, followed by middle school English, for the very same reasons, needing updated resources, and some of those items are in disrepair. So, we definitely want to put some new things in the hands of our kids. And then, the last few on there, really, you could go in any order. They really are overlapping. We have middle school math. We are looking at our courses in-depth for middle school mathematics. Then IB text startups for the program at Spotsylvania High School, AP English, K-5 Math, and K-5 Science. As I put in the text at the top, really, we could be looking at K-12 resources, but for this particular time, we're looking at a $2.5 million carryover. We want to try to prioritize what we can in that first, in that first amount that we're able to spend. Are there any questions from the board?
Let's have a motion for first, and then we'll go to the questions. So, we are... Dr. Meyer, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Blalock. Do we have any discussion, any questions for Mr. Upperco? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the easement to Verizon, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Upperco. Okay, and now we're moving on to the approval of the 2015 carryover usage, uses. Ms. Gaines and Ms. Blalock.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Thank you for an opportunity to present this evening. You should have in front of you a green folder, and I want to draw your attention to a couple items. If you look to the left of your folder, you will see the cover sheet for this particular item. When you look at carryover, it's basically monies that are left over from the previous year. So, if you look at the handout behind the cover sheet, you'll basically see six columns. I want to draw your attention to column four. You'll basically see the carryover, two million, five seventeen, eight fifty. This is the amount that was unexpended as of June 30th of 2015. You can see from instruction, eight sixty-six, admin fifty-five thousand, attendance one fifty-five, transportation two hundred and ninety-one thousand, maintenance five hundred thousand, technology one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and debt service seventy-seven thousand. When you put that in perspective, in terms of looking at the entire budget, instruction only had point four, eight percent unexpended. Administration, one point two, seven percent. Attendance, three percent. Transportation, one point seven. Maintenance, two point four. Technology, one point eight eight, and debt service, point one two. So, in total, the two point five million carryover, the amount unexpended is point eight percent, less than one percent. So therefore, staff did expend ninety-nine point two percent wisely and prudently. That does go to the request for this evening. When you look at the two point five million, there were many priorities that we have, but the top priority is online curriculum resources and instructional materials, two point four million. Instructional technology, one hundred thousand. If you look to the right of your folder, we are providing you with the write-up. When you look at technology, how would the one hundred thousand be spent? Combination of items. Keep in mind, when we were going through the budget about a year ago, we did have to reduce nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. We were hopeful that we would have some carryover, and we do today. So, one hundred thousand would go back to technology. This was the amount that they did give up. It would be used for repair and replacement parts, projector bulbs, for existing projectors, and US batteries. The remaining portion of the carryover would be for online curriculum resources and instructional materials. Before Jen goes through her presentation, I did put in your folder just some trend data. You can see prior to 2015, the school board had very little in the budget for these items, and that was because the goal was to save positions. So, at this time, we'll review for you the two point four.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. At this point in time, I'd really like to entertain any questions that you have. We have a multitude of resources that really, over the past ten years, we've kind of put that on the backburner. As the downturn in the economy happened, we saved positions, we saved as many human resources as we possibly could, because that's what impacts our kids the most. But, many of our resources are now ten, eleven, twelve years old, and they are either in disrepair or very outdated. As you can imagine, science is at the top of the list, simply because of the advancements in science. As you'll see, we are looking at three AP texts at the top of the list, and those really are for, to meet college board requirements. They have a requirement that their text and resources be no older than ten years. So, we are coming to the ten-year mark in those three courses. Next, we have middle school science, followed by middle school English, for the very same reasons, needing updated resources, and some of those items are in disrepair. So, we definitely want to put some new things in the hands of our kids. And then, the last few on there, really, you could go in any order. They really are overlapping. We have middle school math. We are looking at our courses in-depth for middle school mathematics. Then IB text startups for the program at Spotsylvania High School, AP English, K-5 Math, and K-5 Science. As I put in the text at the top, really, we could be looking at K-12 resources, but for this particular time, we're looking at a two point five million dollar carryover. We want to try to prioritize what we can in that first, in that first amount that we're able to spend. Are there any questions from the board?
Let's have a motion for first, and then we'll, we'll go to the questions. So, we are-
I'll move the recommended action.
Okay, so, the, the motion is to approve the carryover, the 2015 carryover balance of two million, five hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred fifty-one dollars. Mr. Blaine? And, may I have a second?
When this is approved-
In second by Ms. Grant. Okay. Mr. Blaine?
When this is approved, does that restrict us specifically to these particular planned expenditures, or if in the near future, you found some reason to change something or others? Is that, is the flexibility in the motion to allow that?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Concern I have, and I'm just thinking, we just approved a easement for Verizon, and I'm assuming that that's going to help solve some of the Wi-Fi problems in the division. I may be wrong, but I assume that that's one of the objectives. I'm especially concerned, frankly, in the sciences areas, both at the AP level and in middle school, because that area, so much is happening so very fast. And I'm reluctant to see us move into textbooks if we can avoid that, if at all possible. I do recognize that SOLs, for example, have, are, on computers now, but we're restricted to desktops pretty much, because Pearson has not yet put SOLs, if I understand correctly, into tablet, so that the tablets could use them. But that, that's coming down the road. And I, just throw out a thought, I've, I have some friends who are in a district, division, and they, that particular division elected to provide a laptop, I'm sorry, an iPad in this case, for every student. And they have more high school kids than we do, and they were able to accomplish most of that without any change in their budget, because they saved so much money in the area of computer purchases and duplication of paper, and even some salaries that people devoted so much to the paper end of things, storage and so on. So, I just throw that out, and to ask, be sure that we're going down the right path when it comes to textbooks. I frankly have that concern, and I think about the upside-down, I guess it is, classrooms where we're doing work in school, and now the children are going home and they're doing their study electronically, and that's going to become more and more and more true all the time, and I'm apprehensive about that.
I do want to just make a comment. I'm glad that you brought that up, Mr. Blaine. These would be both text and non-text resources. So, we are looking at online resources as well than just a mass textbook adoption.
Can I also just piggyback on that? I think that, that as we are looking at approval for these particular items at this time, and I understand the tendency for us to get into the very complex issues, both of where's the future going to take us, and some of the, the problems and challenges we have in terms of equity and access for all of our students, depending upon where they live. We don't, as a practice, and because right now, it's not economically feasible, we don't tend to go full-scale print resource adoption, one per student. Part of that is because we haven't had the funds to do that over the last several years, and it's also because we are in that place, that middle ground, of trying to make sure that whatever conversions we make in the future are going to be in the best interest of our students. And from where I sit, in terms of feedback on that, we have a, a community, both that craves the print resources and craves the one-to-one devices. So, we know that right now, and not to be flip about it, but we're somewhat Barnes and Noble, in that we need to be able to provide that balance of resources to meet the educational needs of all students, and to support our parents, who are trying to also support education in the home. And so, this right now is just to make sure, and, and what's not being shared now, but will be shared more in the future, is this is also part of the curriculum development process, not just, here's some additional funding, so let's buy some books that are out of date, or that are currently out of date. But it's also, this is the place in terms of process where we want to enhance the implementation of curriculum in a number of these different areas. And this is only what we have now, but that does not mean that we will not also be looking at additional modified or blended adoptions, even in the spring, depending on available funding.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Ms. Grant, and then Mr. Laura.
Ms. Gaines, what is the source of the additional revenues?
The source of the additional revenues come from Medicaid. So, we do want to give kudos to Teresa Brown, who's on an outstanding job.
Mr. Laura, and then Mr. Braswell.
Ms. Gaines, I simply want to take a minute to commend you and the staff and Dr. Baker for the way you manage the people's money. And I know that, as a lawman, I know that you cannot spend more money than, that have been allocated to the school division, and you managed to run the school division and keep it inside one percent. That, that's commendable. And all along, you managed, you know, you were tracking every dollar, and now, when it comes time to approve, you know, what do we do with this money? Well, this is a well-thought-out process. Where can these funds be best utilized? As a taxpayer in this county, I find that very reassuring that you keep us within the limit of the law, and then you put the money that's carryover to the best use possible for, for the benefit of our children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell, and then Ms. Blalock.
Ms. Gaines, on the maintenance and transportation, it appears that we gleaned about eight hundred thousand in savings. What percentage of that is from reduced fuel costs?
When you go back to FY15, I want to say we had about two hundred thousand left over from the fuel savings, and we did purchase two school buses. So, when you look at the total gasoline budget, which is about two million dollars, we saved about ten percent.
Thank you. Ms. Blalock.
Thank you. I have a couple of comments and a question for you. First of all, I want to commend you. It seems our departments are doing quite well with their budgets. It also seems that you put every dime of it back into instruction. You can't ask for anything more. I want to, another comment I want to make, just to clarify with the public, the first thing you hear when you hear there's two point five million, is they say, put more teachers in the classroom. And they don't understand that this is a one-time money, and that's, we need to clear up, that's why we don't immediately just go hire employees, because that's what we would like to do.
Sure.
If we could do what we want, we'd hire bodies with this. But that's why we don't do that. So, it's sort of the same thing you see with the public with the, you know, the CIP money. And they wonder why we use that. Well, it can't be used for instruction. So, with the different colors of money, it's important we talk about that, just to educate the public. So, even though it is a large amount that we're going to be able to put towards instruction, that is why we don't put it towards bodies, just to clear that up.
Thank you.
In looking at it, I certainly would never argue with you, Ms. Blake, on where it goes. I know you know where the needs are. Just a curious question, it seems like high school does not get a big portion of this money.
Right.
Is it because the high school, have we done more in the past, or are they the next in line? It just seems when you add up the things for the high school, they're a little bit shorter than the elementary and the middle schools.
As AP texts have come due, you know, they're over that ten-year limit, we have purchased through the years, because it's a smaller purchase. You have more course offerings, fewer students taking each course, so it's a more manageable amount of money within the budget that we have. When you're looking at K-5 mathematics or English-
Yeah, that was the big chunk of it.
Yeah, that costs a lot more money, because a lot of, more of our students are sitting in those classes that really touch every student, K-5. So, yes, high school is on the list, probably after some of these bigger items, but just kind of prioritizing these carryover funds first.
That's where it needs to be. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were taking care of high school, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And Ms. Blalock, because I think it's a, it's a good question, because I asked the same question. And I think it has to do, too, with where we are in the curriculum development process.
That's true.
One of the aspects of that process is getting feedback from the practitioners, in terms of what teachers are using day-to-day, and their, their need for the type of resource that they currently have. As many of our teachers are working with it, with flip-type classrooms, or they're also working with more online types of resources that are aligned with their curriculum, some of that is based on need that, but I'm sure we can find many high school teachers out there that would also want some updated texts-
Absolutely.
-and additional resources. And I think we're hopeful, in the spring, as we evaluate where we are in terms of the current year budget, that there might be an opportunity to take advantage of-
Absolutely.
-anything that, that would be left prior to the end of the school year. So, but we'll also update the board on the cycles, how they'll be impacted by the process at a, at a later date.
Just, it's all going to instruction. That cannot be said enough. That's what we're here, that's what we're about. So, I really appreciate that.
Thanks.
Dr. Meyer?
Madam Chair, I'm not sure who best to answer this question. When we were going through the cuts to finalize our current year budget, we had to take an awful lot, nine hundred thousand out of instruction. Are we making that up here? Because I know there was a big portion of that went into assessments. So, I just want to make sure we able to capture that, or is that going to have to be another piece that had to be delayed?
It's actually a combination, Dr. Meyer. When you look at the budget, we had to cut out nine, ten. When we cut out the nine, ten, of course, some of that was transportation, maintenance, attendance, and health. So, that nine hundred thousand was across the board. So, we actually were able to put some monies back into instruction.
Okay, good enough. And congratulations for a job well done, for putting the focus on instruction, because that's what we need to be doing. Many, many thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Ms. Blalock, I have one more question about the books. So, excuse, I'm sorry. The books have not yet been, we don't know what books we're purchasing yet. Now, will there be a, there will be a time where the teachers come and, and look at the books? Okay, and I see Ms. Plinard nodding as well.
Yes, we put together an adoption committee, mostly with the teachers, any other stakeholders. If it's a high school student, perhaps a student, our liaisons for the content area, and parents are invited to sit on that, and then we have public period to, to take a look at those. But we wanted to have some monies in place before we went through that process to choose.
No, that's wonderful.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Any more questions or comments? Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of the approval of the carryover funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, eight point, eight point zero three, recommendation to not, not to elect an employer-sponsored hybrid plan. Ms. Gaines?
Thank you. When looking at the VRS program, they do have three VRS plans. Plan number one is for any employees hired before January one, 2010. Plan two is for any employees hired after January one, 2010. Then, the new plan they just added is for hybrid employees. These are any employees hired on or after January first, 2014. When you look at hybrid employees, their retirement is partially pension-based and partially contribution-based. Therefore, the VRS guidelines do allow hybrid employees to voluntarily contribute up to an additional four percent into their contribution plan. When looking at VRS, they're basically asking us to determine, would we be interested in providing an employer-sponsored hybrid plan? Staff did sit down with other school districts as well, and we compiled a list of advantages and disadvantages. In looking at some of the work that we were able to do, if we were to move forward, the employer would be required to have a separate plan document. This would require additional funds as well. Number two, fewer tax-sheltered nudity vendors will offer the plan. Number three, employees will be required to pay double fees, one to the TPA and one to the investment provider. Also, we did survey other school districts, and of the one hundred and thirty-two, seventy-four have already determined that they're not going to move forward with the additional plan. So, at this time, staff is recommending that we not move forward in offering this additional plan. However, what we will do, we basically have about two hundred and eighty hybrid employees. As they come through the new orientation process, they will learn about their different opportunities, and we will also provide additional educational forms. In addition, our system also has some system limitations. So, at this time, we're requesting that the school board approve the resolution as indicated.
May I have a motion?
I will so move the recommended action.
I'll second.
Okay, so, Mr. Blaine and Ms. Grant, any questions?
I just have a comment.
Okay, Ms. Grant.
The Finance Committee has examined this option, and as she said, there were numerous reasons to not go with this plan. Numerous, more than she listed, and couldn't think of many benefits to go with it. So, we definitely do not recommend it.
Mr. Braswell?
I just have a comment as well, and I, I concur with what Ms. Grant just said. The service from the employee's point, when they need point of service, is extremely difficult when you have to go through a third-party administrator. And so, this is clearly, by rejecting, this is more employee-friendly, as opposed to adopting a hybrid plan.
Correct. Any more questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Call for the vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of not to elect a use of employer-sponsored hybrid plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Gaines. Moving on to eight point zero four, second reading approval of revisions of policy JL, Student Fundraising Activities. Ms. Daniels.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. I am here to ask you to approve the second reading of Policy JL, Student Fundraising Activities and Fundraising by Outside and In-School Organizations. You approved the first reading on September 28th. So, the recommendation from staff is that the school board approve for the second reading the proposed revisions to school board policy JL, Student Fundraising Activities and Fundraising by Outside and In-School Organization, as outlined, as presented.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve Policy JL?
I move to approve this policy.
Ms. Grant, may I have a second?
So move, Madam Chair.
Dr. Meyer, any questions or comments? Okay, may I call for the vote for those approved, the approval of Policy JL, second reading? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Okay, item eight point zero five. So, the VSBA Convention Annual Conference is next month, on November 19th. The Delegate Assembly is going to conduct the Association's Annual Business Meeting. I, as the chair, is our, our, our delegate, is our delegate to the, to the VSBA, and then Mr. Braswell is our alternate. During the Delegate Assembly, the delegates will be focusing on major educational issues and voting on updates and amendments to the VSBA Positions Handbook. We will both be in attendance, but we only get one vote, so I will be, do having, I will be the one vote, the voting member. So, what I am asking is, we had in the, you have all received in, through VSBA mail, and also in an email attachment, the VSBA Handbook, and I am asking that you authorize to approve the amendments set forth in the VSBA Position Handbook.
Madam Chair, I will make the motion that the board give you the authority to accept or represent the board on the nine proposed amendments.
I will.
Okay, so, a motion by Dr. Meyer, and a second by Mr. Blaine. Any comments or questions or, okay. All those in favor of the proposed VSBA amendments for the Delegate Assembly, and me voting yes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, seven zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to items nine point zero one and nine point zero two, informational items, usual and customary. Okay, moving on to items 9.01 and 9.02, informational items, usual and customary. Thank you. And then, moving on to 10.01, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? Okay, I do have one item. Just, we've, about a year or so ago, we had an update from the Attendance Committee. I was just wondering, I would like to have another update on what's going on with the Attendance Committee and how the new attendance policy was working. So that's just tacking on to what we've already been working on. Any more? Okay, moving on to 10.02, new business. Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if this is necessarily new business or old business rehashed, but I've been talking to some constituents, and I've been doing a little pondering on the subject over the past several months, and it pertains to sixth-grade participation in middle school sports. And I'd like to have the Division revisit why we don't include sixth graders in middle school sports. I understand why eighth graders are discouraged from participating in high school sport, but sixth graders in middle school sport is a little bit different for me. I'm not understanding why we discourage that, especially when other divisions that surround us, Prince William County, Stafford County, and a few others, provide for sixth-grade participation in middle school sports. There is, in some cases, a concern about maturation between a sixth grader and an eighth-grade football player, but that is remedied by the ability of the coach to cut a child if he is not physically able to participate in that particular sport. But in cases, in a lot of cases, with female athletes, they've reached that level of puberty where they're able to compete with their eighth-grade comrades, if you will, and co-players, and they should be given that opportunity to participate in it. So, I guess I'd like to see if there's a way to address that. I'd love to hear my Board colleagues' comments on that, of why this particular division does not allow for sixth-grade participation in middle school sports.
Madam Chair, would it not be appropriate for the Superintendent with the staff to be able to come back to us with the information as to how other divisions are doing this, whether we're different or not different, and what are the pros and cons for that consideration?
Dr. Baker, you'll bring that back to us?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, any more new business items?
No, no. I was going to say, I think I agree with that approach. It catches me off-guard. I wouldn't know how to answer that right now.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our closed meeting. October 12th, 2015, be it resolved that the school board conduct a closed meeting for the following purpose: Consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the Board as permitted by 2.23711A1 of the Code of Virginia. May I have a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Blalock, a second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor of going into closed session?
Aye.
All those opposed, 7-0. We're in closed session.
Need a motion and a second?
I'm sorry. May I have a vote to return to open session, please?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now, certification of closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in this meeting. May I have a motion to certify the closed meeting? Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Ms. Grant. All those, we need a roll-call vote. Ms. Grant, starting on your side.
Grant, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Blalock, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Laura, aye.
7-0. Dr. Martin, could you read the items from the closed meeting, please?
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendations of the Superintendent for Personnel Appointments, Assignments, Resignations, and Retirement as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Motion by Mr. Laura, a second by Mr. Blaine. All those in favor of the items from closed meetings, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, 7-0.
Madam Chair, I move, two motions, one that we adjourned, and other one we wish the Board to block.
Okay, motion to adjourn by Mr. Laura, a second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor of adjournment? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 7-0, 734.